Will the minute taker please call the roll?
Alderman Lazaro.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Winger. Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Here.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Okay, declare quorum. Next is approval of the minutes.
A move.
Meeting October 23rd, 2014. Eugene made the motion, seconded by Alderman Sizmarski. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next is report and recommendation, time allowed for zoning request resubmittals. Mr. Forrest, are you gonna take this?
I will, Ms. Henigan is sick this evening, so...
Sorry to hear that.
As am I.
I'm sure.
So, did she give you your notes, her notes?
I have actually the memo that she submitted in the package. She and I have spoken about this. There really is no staff recommendation on this, but it was brought forward to staff in September to kind of look into the required one-year waiting period, which applies to a special use request. If that special use request is denied, there's a waiting period contained in the Unified Development Ordinance that says that person cannot come back for a year with that same request. That is not the same for somebody requesting a variation, but to get consistency in the UDO, it would make sense to at least discuss it if the city council so desires. Right now, if a special use is denied, they would have to wait for a year. The exception to the rule would include the inclusion of substantial new evidence or proof of changed conditions. That would allow the petitioner to submit a request at any time. In addition, if there were some major revisions to a previously submitted special use request that might change the scope of that, then we could consider bringing that forward again without having to wait the one-year period. But at this point, there is a one-year period, and I guess it's up to the council whether you want to waive that or keep it the same.
Given what you said, I mean, so if there's a modification or they make some changes, I guess it just doesn't make sense to me if somebody submitted something, it got rejected for them to get back in line with the same thing. So, whether they waited a year or didn't wait a year, they would have to make some changes to expect a different outcome. So, I guess my opinion is as long as they have the ability to modify or change their submittal, and that's allowed, then we should just keep the one year. Alderman Roy Wesley.
Modification could be a parking spot.
It could be.
So, if you change one parking spot, then you don't have to wait a year?
Technically, that would be correct. If you were only, I mean theoretically, if you were asking for three parking spaces and that got turned down, and you came back and went, "Okay, it seemed like there was some ground for two, I'll apply for two parking spaces."
And...
Mr. Forrest, would you agree?
Correct. And if they want to spend their $555 again, that's certainly their right.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
And your modification is who's determined that modification of one parking spot? Is it the building department or is it the applicator?
Well, any application before staff presents it, they have to make a submittal with the site plan or detailed information, what their special use is going to be. So, if we get a special use and they're asking for three parking spaces and it's turned down, and the next submittal has two parking spaces, then staff determines that's a change to the plan, so we would bring it forward.
So, they won't have to wait no period? They could submit it right away?
Correct.
Okay.
Was that your motion?
The reason why I brought this up is because I don't want two construction seasons to go by without nothing. And it's just making it, what I'm just trying to do here is make it easier for builders to build in Wooddale to not wait a whole year. And maybe things have changed. I mean, even now, say we're going into an election year, in April, the council's going to change. Maybe, maybe not.
No, it's gonna stay the same.
But they might have that time period in there of a year still. Who knows? The council might just say, "Yeah, we like this, but you have to wait now because of the year." So, what I'm saying here is, it's still two construction seasons. What's the difference if we make it a six month or a year? Just a little more paperwork? I mean, that's what government is, is our paperwork anyways. Lot of it. I'll make a motion to change it to six months.
I second that.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
My question is, why would we change? They could come and change it. Anytime they make a change on a plan, they still could come back. If it gets rejected, they're going to still come back and reconsider. Long they make a change? I don't care if they move the sod in a different location, they still could come back. I mean, what's the difference six months to a year? The only thing is, if they leave a plan the same way as is, they can't come back for a year. But if they even move a light pole two feet, that's a change in the plan. Technically, it is, if you really look at it. If you take one parking spot out and put a new one in, take one down to three, it's a change. It doesn't matter. Anything they change on that stays. So, I mean, what's the difference between six months and a year? I mean, they just gonna have to come up with the money.
Mayor, please.
Well, basically, if somebody comes in, they go to the CDC committee, they're asking for three variances or four variances, and basically, the CDC says, "That's too many variances. No." Comes to his council, needs supermajority, and the council agrees. Okay, so the time clock starts for a year. But if the developer changes and only asks for two variances, that's a major change. I mean, if he, if one of the variances was parking and it's one, if one spot was the variance, which I can't see somebody coming in for a variance for one spot, maybe he had 10 spots. Maybe he's added five extra spots. He took away five spots and added more green space. Maybe it was a stormwater issue. I don't know. Could be any number of things. I mean, I don't think changing the light posts from this corner to that corner is a change, but, you know, if they really want to pay another $550, is that the new price, John? I thought we raised those prices anyways.
Mr. Forrest.
Yeah, $600, I don't...
Whatever it was.
Yeah, it's $555. Just to clarify, two points. If somebody is applying for a variation and it's denied, that waiting period is not required. It's only when they apply for a special use and it gets denied. Then the waiting period is enforced. Also, again, this was brought forward really just for discussion and for staff to get direction from the council, because we would have to take this back before the CDC, prior to bringing it back to committee as a formal report and recommendation.
So, we're only talking, sorry.
Mayor, please.
So, you're only talking for special use, not even for, if they change variations, it wouldn't matter, they can do that anyways. And they can do that, they're denied today, they can come in tomorrow and say, "Listen, we only want three variations or two variations instead of four," right?
Yeah, I mean, variations or planned unit development, I mean, all of those could involve a special use as well, so...
Follow. Sure, go ahead. Mayor, please.
So, why do we need to change it? I mean, I like the attorney, but we really don't need to pay him for a new ordinance. Sorry.
No objection, no offense taken.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
In that case, if you're gonna do it that way, you're looking, I don't think these builders understand that. That they have, that they could come in tomorrow and reapply. I don't know how you're explaining it down there, but I've talked to many people too. Not just one particular one, but many builders too, that they still gotta wait a year. Wright Development was one person like that. Okay? So, then it's not making, it's not being clear enough to the builder and saying, "You were turned down here, now you gotta wait a year."
Mr. Forrest.
Yeah, I can't think of any builders, really, that we've had that type of an issue with. We don't really have that many requests for variations and special use, and haven't for several years. I mean, we had one recently that was turned down. It was kind of complicated, but there were a lot of moving parts to it, and that was turned down. But as far as other builders not understanding the process or complaining about it, I'm hard pressed to think of who.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
In your paperwork and somewhere in there, does it show that they could come back immediately if they're turned down? Highlight it.
Mr. Forrest.
I would have to look at it. I don't think so.
If it isn't, I would like, if we're not gonna change it, I would like to see that in there, highlight it for the builder, whoever's gonna do it. If we're gonna keep it a year, fine, keep it a year. But it should be highlighted.
Alderman Frank Lazaro.
Thank you. Just what the Alderman Wesley was saying. Well, I think he was the only one who was talking. I'll say Roy then. I think that's the builder's responsibility, really, to find that out. I don't know if that's something that a builder wouldn't really want to find that out, because that seems like an important part of the puzzle. I don't really think it really matters, six months to a year. As far as I'm concerned, I would just prefer to just keep it the way it is. Thank you.
Let me just make one comment. Again, I think it should stay a year too. And the reason I want to keep it a year is because it really only applies to coming back with the same thing that failed. So, essentially, you're coming back with the same project that failed before. It doesn't make sense to me that you're allowed to bring that back every month until you get the right answer, like you're a two-year-old trying to get money to go to the show or something. So, that'd be sent. Alderman Jacob.
This doesn't really talk about, but is there a maximum amount of times they could come back on certain projects?
No. No. But again, from our experience, typically, if a builder or somebody comes in for variation and it's soundly defeated, they don't really see any point or any sense in coming back with that same request again, because they assume they're gonna have the same result.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Again, I understand what Alderman Lazaro's saying, it's their duty to find the rules out, but let's make it easier for the builder, at least highlight it to that point. Try to make it business friendly. Right. Fine, circle it, highlight it, whatever you want to do, as long as it shows something.
Any questions? No more questions? Eugene?
Alderman Wesley. Eugene?
That's not a change. In this one, we're looking to notify the building department. Because we aren't changing... I think I got a little confused here. Are we looking at revamping a format of the paperwork for the building department? And in this document that's here now? He says it's there.
Mr. Forrest.
I think Alderman Roy Wesley just wants to be sure that staff makes the extra effort to educate the applicants about the time span.
There's a motion on the floor, right? Mayor, please.
I think there was a motion to change it.
There was.
Right.
There was a motion by Alderman Eugene Wesley, seconded by Roy.
Absolutely not me.
Or Roy.
And it was seconded by Tony, right? So, you gotta take a roll call on that motion, right?
I withdraw my motion.
I agree. I agree.
So, are we going to...
Mr. Bun.
Now, my only question was, how do the two-year-olds get to the show if they do get the money? Well, after dad gives them money, they gotta drive to the show.
So, we giving them directions to leave the... It's done. We're done.
We're just... All right, very good. Next is report and recommendation, termination of the existing letter of credit and acceptance of the two-year maintenance bond for Arborwood subdivision. Mr. Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, sir.
Yes. All right. Since the last time this was brought forward, the developer has completed to the satisfaction of the city engineer, city staff, the design engineer, all of the public improvements for the Arborwood subdivision. He submitted a bill of sale to transfer those to the city. He submitted a letter verifying that the homeowners association is going to retain ownership of Outlot F, which is the detention pond for the subdivision. He submitted a two-year maintenance bond in the amount of 10% of the original letter of credit. And one added piece of correspondence that I had him submit today, since I know how much you like surprises, is a letter from him guaranteeing that there's some remaining construction debris in the subdivision and some silt fencing and so forth, that he will have those removed prior to the next city council meeting.
Alderman Lazaro.
John, is there a homeowners association there yet?
There is a homeowners association, but at this point, Elmhurst Builders, since they own, I believe, 80% of the townhomes, they are the homeowners association.
Alderman Lazaro.
So, him giving control to the homeowners association, who in fact is he giving that control to?
Mr. Forrest.
Well, the homeowners association only consists of the townhomes. The single-family homes are not represented in the homeowners association.
Alderman Lazaro.
So, the homeowners association are the townhomes?
Correct.
So, in fact, he's giving these to the townhomes?
Correct.
And they have an association?
Well, at this point, since he hasn't, I think he's only sold two of the eight townhomes, he owns the majority of the townhomes, so he is still the majority owner. He is the homeowners association. Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alderman Jacob.
Couple of quick questions. The sidewalk over there, the engineer's okay with the way the dip is in there?
Yes.
Okay. They don't see a problem with flooding or anything with that?
No.
And then, second of all, the two-year maintenance bond, and what happens if that, the association does not take care of that detention pond?
If the association does not take care of the detention pond, there's a section in the restrictive covenants and the declarations for the homeowners association that's established a silent special service area. So, if they do not start, if they don't take care of the pond, then we would have the attorney enforce that clause.
Mr. Bun.
And that was a practice that we implemented. What it does is it creates the special service area at the time when you've got a unified ownership, so you don't have the possibility of it being defeated by 51% of the property owners. And what it does is it gives the city the ability to go in and do the work that needs to be done, and immediately assess those property owners who are benefiting from that improvement by having that being added to their taxes. So, that was a protection that the staff put in the agreement to make sure that the city wasn't on the hook for that, because as you know, we've got a lot of ponds out there that have not been properly maintained, and, you know, the city, it's been a quandary for the city.
Alderman Jacob.
There is gonna be a maintenance bond for two years. Is that, is there plenty to cover any problems over there? I mean, I don't really see anything. Everything looks pretty much fixed, but just to make sure.
Mr. Forrest.
It's, he is posting the amount that's required in the, that the city requires in the UDO. It's, I believe, the figure's 92,700, something like that. And those improvements have been in for several years and operating without any issues, as far as I know.
Alderman Lazaro.
John, do we have any idea of what kind of maintenance that pond requires yearly?
I would probably defer that for definitive answer to Matt York, but off the top of my head, it would include keeping, being sure the inlets and the outlets are kept clean of debris, cutting the grass and the weeds and so forth, and, you know, that, those sort of, just typical maintenance items.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Well, I'll take a motion to court our regulation to terminate the execution letter of credit accepted for two-year maintenance bond for Arborwood subdivision. That will be my motion.
Second.
Mr. Bun.
Yeah, I would just suggest that you also include in there, accepting the public improvements, which is water, sanitary sewer, stormwater facility, public streets, public sidewalks, street lights, and a sanitary lift station. So, it's the three, three components would be the release of the letter of credit, acceptance of the public improvements, and the establishment of the maintenance bond.
Well, I'll add in, all of that in my motion, because I can't repeat what he said.
Eileen can say so, you can say so, move Eileen on corporate.
Okay, I'll, that will be my motion.
Does this second...
I agree.
Agree? Okay. I have a question, this one's probably for the attorney, though. In the maintenance bond, they don't specifically mention the lift station in there. It's left out, but they did add the detention pond, which shouldn't be in there. Should we get that fixed?
Yeah, the lift stage, I think you could make the argument that it's referenced by, it's in there by reference, but I think they have it specified in there, would be appropriate.
Yeah, I would prefer specified, and then if we're not doing the detention pond, take the detention pond out of there. Right? The detention pond isn't in...
Well, I think it, I would leave the detention pond in there as well, because there may be some maintenance with the detention pond that would be subject to the letter of credit. Or the maintenance pond, I mean.
Okay. So, we're just add the lift station? And then, is there an issue with, part of the documents read, what's the name of the builder? Elmhurst Builders? But then the guarantees read FBG Corporation? Are there any issues with the different corporate entities on the different documents? Mr. Bun.
No, because what you're, the maintenance bond is for the specific project, and it's with the amendment that you've suggested with the lift station, that covers that project. So, it's also the same owner, I understand, but it's not pertinent, because as long as we have an entity and a maintenance bond that's going to cover that, it doesn't really matter who it's from. It's unusual, it's not the same entity. In this instance, it happens to be the same owner. He has different corporate entities, and one of his corporate entities, for some reason, has given it to us. But from the legal standpoint, the city's still covered, because it's covering those public improvements that I specified and that were delineated in Alderman E. Wesley's motion.
Okay. Next was the bill of sale that's signed by seller's representative, but there's no indication of who that signature belongs to, and being that you can't read it? Should there be a name or an understanding of who actually signed that document?
Yeah, I don't know if Mr. Forrest saw the signature, but that makes sense, is just to get an indication, maybe a printed name on there from the individual signing.
I mean, I'm just looking, the secretary could have signed it, for all I know, with no power to sign.
Yeah. I mean, it appears to be the same as in the letter, the cover letter that accompanies that, but to the extent we can have the printed name of Frank Judas underneath there, so there's no issue and indicate his capacity to be signing that.
Okay. I think that that's it for the contracts. So, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
My question is almost...
That you brought up, do we have to make that into that motion, too? And secondarily, you gotta agree, invading the lift station?
Mr. Bun.
Well, no, that, when it comes back to you at council, that will be included in the, in the maintenance bond, and they'll be on the, they'll also be the designation as to who the seller's representative is on the bill of sale. That's all part, you've approved the bill of sale. What Alderman Woods is suggesting is that the bill of sale should be letter perfect, and that's a way of confirming that seller's representative is in frank, is in fact Frank Judas, so, and will include the sanitary lift station in the maintenance bond. So, it's just a matter of modifying the documents consistent with the board's action.
So, we had a motion and a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next items to be considered at future meetings, ornamental sign purchase in January. Is there anything anybody else would like to add or talk? No?
Can we get update on the facade program that's going on?
Updated.
What's the status of that program? I mean, the construction going on there?
We can. Next, make a motion to adjourn? So, move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourned?
I'd like to call the Public Works Committee to order. Roll call taker note that the same people are here. We're gonna do number six on the agenda first, because we have Mark Phipps from Baxton Woodman that's gonna do a presentation.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before we start this, I think it's proper that we, I know it's under your committee, and you could do what you want on it. Since Judy Vars passing away, I think she should have a moment of silence, since she was loved by Democrats and Republicans. I'm not playing politics here, but she was a state official.
Okay. So, I'll agree to that. I'd like to have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. First, I would like to approve the minutes of the meeting from November 13th. That is my motion to...
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Just want to add in, Catalano was not entered and present in the minutes. We can add that in?
Minute taker? Okay. And that passes. Report and recommendation, approval of design concept for Powder Street Rain Garden. Mark, I'm gonna turn that over to you. Mark, I'm sorry, Matt?
Yeah. Thank you, Alderman. We are here today to go over the design plan for the Powder Street Rain Garden Basin, and Mark Phipps from Baxton Woodman is here to go through the design. And we're making a recommendation today that we accept this design, and if there's any questions or comments that we can answer, we'll go through those as the presentation goes along.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
Thank you. Powder Street Basin is located on the east side of the city. You can see where the circle is. Just above that is Irving Park Road and the railroad tracks. The north-south road on the east side of the map is Route 83. I didn't bring one, sorry. Well, I think the next slide will show. Okay. So, the Powder Street Basin is tucked away kind of at the east end of a business district, and on the east side of it is a row of townhomes, right at the intersection of Potter and Pine. This is a picture of what the basin looked like the first time I saw it, which was July of last year, so about a year and a half ago. And then a few months later, this is what it looked like. The area that's in the box shown on the map now is the area that drains to this detention basin, so just a several-block area of the city. And the outflow from the detention basin flows to the north into the railroad tracks, and then east, then it crosses the railroad tracks and into the Bensonville Stormwater System. So, my understanding of the city's goals for this project are, one, to improve the appearance of the basin; two, to improve the quality of the runoff from the basin; and then, three, to, if possible, obtain grant funding for the project. That's partly the reason for the timing of this presentation. DuPage County has a grant program, you may be aware of it, water quality improvement... Uh, DuPage County has a grant program, uh, you may be aware of it, uh, the Water Quality Improvement Program. And, uh, there's grant funding available up to twenty-five percent of project costs, of construction costs. And, uh, an application for that grant is due next Friday, so, uh, we're planning to submit a grant application on behalf of this project. And, uh, but the hope is that, uh, we want to make sure that, uh, the city is, is, uh, supportive of the concept before we submit the grant application. So let me run through a, a few of the concepts, uh, that we've included in, in the project. Uh, first of all, as you probably noticed from the photograph, there are retaining walls on, on three sides of the detention basin. And so this concept, uh, would maintain those three retaining walls, uh, and, and leave them in place. You may have also noticed from the photograph that there's a, a low-flow channel through the basin, so from the, the south end to the north end, uh, there's a, a channel that, that conveys the low flow, uh, all the way through the basin. Uh, but we also are proposing to install a, a new catch basin in the intersection. Uh, the purpose of this catch basin would be to trap sediment. Uh, you may be aware that sometimes in detention basins, uh, uh, something called a four bay would be put at the point where water discharges into the basin. The purpose of a four bay is to capture sediment, uh, so that it doesn't spread out over the bottom of the basin, but it would be collected in, in one area to, uh, ease, uh, the maintenance burden. Uh, our thought here is that you can do the same thing in the street with a catch basin, and, um, and in doing so, the sediment would be trapped out in the street, below ground in, in the catch basin in the street, but it would be a lot easier for city staff to maintain, uh, and, and collect and dispose of that sediment if it was captured in a, in a catch basin in the street, rather than, um, having to remove rock and sediment together, uh, from an area that's, uh, away from the street. This is a different view of, of the same concept. Uh, this is a, a cross-sectional view of the detention basin. And, uh, and so what you can see on the left and the right-hand sides are the retaining walls that would be left in place. And, uh, another aspect of, of the proposed concept would be to add a gradual slope to the bottom of the basin. Uh, the purpose of this would be to, uh, make sure that, you know, there's, there's a steady flow of water into this basin, uh, primarily from the foundation drains of the, uh, the townhomes that are adjacent to it. And adding a, a slope to the bottom of the basin, uh, will help make sure that that ground dries out from time to time, so that it's not a, a muddy mess, uh, like you saw in the, in the first photo of the basin. Yes?
Go on.
Going back to that basin?
Mm-hmm.
How deep would that basin be?
Well, the retaining wall, from the, from the base of the retaining wall to the, uh, the overflow at the north end of the... Which one, oh, this one here, okay. So the, the basin overflows into the, into the railroad right-of-way, about right there, right here. And the difference in elevation from the bottom of the wall at that spot to the overflow elevation is maybe about four feet. It's, uh, quite a bit taller on the sides, over here. Uh, may, maybe five and a half, six feet?
And, uh, to...
Go ahead.
So you, to clean out, out the basin for the city, for cleaning out the basin, how often are you saying that basin would have to be cleaned out?
Oh, let me clarify. The, the bulk of the sediment removal would be removed from the catch basin in the street, where the arrow is showing.
Okay.
So the, that's the idea of adding the catch basin there, is that you'd capture the sediment in that spot, where it would be much easier for the, the city could remove it, uh, with a, a vector truck, uh, just like they do the, uh, sediment cleaning from the, their catch basins. As opposed to, uh, the other, uh, maybe a more typical concept for a basin like this would be to construct, to excavate an area right here at, at the point where the water enters the basin, capture the sediment there. But, uh, the concept is that would be a little more difficult for city staff to, to remove the, the sediment from that location.
Tony?
Do, do we have the breakdown of the costs between the, the rock wall and the channel banks and the, uh, the rain, um, the actual rain garden? Do we have a breakdown on the costs?
Yeah, so, um, the, the, the overall concept that I'm presenting here, uh, and I was, I'm gonna present, uh, there are a few other concepts or a few other aspects of the project, but the concept I'm presenting to you is, uh, is estimated at a hundred and ten thousand dollars for construction.
And that's the whole project?
Yes.
Do we have a breakdown?
A breakdown, uh, of each item that I'm presenting. Uh, I can provide that, it's not in the presentation. Uh, the items that we're talking about here, I would say that the four bay is, uh, probably about a two-thousand-dollar cost. Uh, the catch basin is probably about eight thousand dollars, including the, the catch basin and the pavement restoration around that.
And the rain garden?
Uh, the, the rain garden, so, uh, the areas along the sides here.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have that cost at, at the top of my head. Um, uh, I guess, I mean, I, I can certainly provide that. Uh, I would say that, uh, if we're talking about the, the engineered soil and the native plantings, uh, the engineered soil might be around ten thousand dollars. Uh, the native plantings, um, uh, several thousand dollars.
Eugene?
You got a guy presenting a detention basin, what we may decide to do with this detention basin. I'm seeing stuff that we're gonna make a decision up here tonight, do we like the design? That's what I'm hearing here. Obviously, I'm hearing more and more that we don't have all the, the package deal here, and are we going a rain, are we going rain garden? What's the price tag of that? He said he didn't know that. He also said that he didn't know the price tag of the other stuff. So instead, me sitting here listening to this presentation, if I don't have numbers here to go by, why would I vote to spend a hundred and six thousand dollars, or whatever we're talking here, if I don't even know if we choose to go rain garden? I'm just saying, what's the purpose of this presentation, then if I don't have all the documents and all the facts here?
Matt, you want to answer it, or does, uh, Mark want to answer? Oh, Mayor?
All right. The rain garden, with the improvements to the pond, everything included, they're estimating at one-ten. It's not that we don't have a price for the rain garden specifically for the plantings. Is that correct, Mark?
That is correct. Yeah, I, I misunderstood the question. I thought you were asking for item by item.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, as, as you look at this project, there, as, as we look at this, the kind of waffly kind of shapes in the, in the upper corner, and then along the, along the eastern wall are, are considered the rain garden portion of, of the whole entire basin. Not the whole entire basin is going to be a rain garden, just like in the ones on Elizabeth. Not the whole entire, uh, property was a rain garden, only a portion of it was. Um, the rest of it is going to be the naturalized planting areas, similar to the, the Elizabeth Court ones that we talked about before. So the entire project is a hundred and ten thousand dollars, or whatever, engineering estimate of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. The rain garden portion of that, you know, we don't have an exact number for right at this time, but it's a part of the whole entire project, including the catch basin, is an engineering estimate of a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Mark, can you, uh, proceed with your presentation?
Yeah, gladly. So another aspect of, of the, the concept that we're recommending would be to, uh, install, uh, engineered soil at the base of the retaining walls. Uh, the engineered soil is a mixture of sand and compost, uh, and, and that's, the, the benefit of that is that that would be, uh, that would more readily infiltrate stormwater into the ground. Uh, so the concept involves, uh, native plantings across the entire basin, uh, including above the engineered soil, uh, but also the areas that would not be, uh, replaced with native soil. Uh, so that you'd have native plants over the entire bottom of the basin, but the, um, the, the engineered soil would, 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 uh, more rapidly infiltrate stormwater. Uh, if we wanted to go with a concept that would have engineered soil over the entire bottom of the basin, that probably would double the cost of the project.
Mayor?
Mark, when you said the three remaining walls stay up, are you saying that the south wall comes down when you put in that catch basin?
Uh, there isn't a wall on the south side. It's a, it's a kind of a gradual slope from the, from the edge of the road down to the bottom of the basin.
There's like a berm, there's like a little berm, there's a ditch in that berm that goes into the...
Pete?
At one point, um, they were talking about, uh, rocks instead of soil on the one, on the east side. Wouldn't rocks be better there, since we do have the water coming from the townhomes on the east side?
Well, the idea with, with, uh, engineered soil is that, uh, the water, as it comes in from the, from the foundation drains, would infiltrate rapidly in that location. Another concept would be to have, uh, to have rocks in there. Uh, my understanding was that the, when we developed this concept, was that the, um, this committee was interested in seeing, you know, what would it, you know, what would the project look like? What would it cost if we were, uh, to modify this basin as a rain garden? So a different option would be to have more rock instead of native plants, uh, but, um, that, uh, this, this is sort of the rain garden concept, and, and it, uh, one of the, you know, some of the feedback I could get from, from me tonight would be to modify the concept, uh, to have more rock and less plants.
Mike?
Matt, do you, uh, do you recall what we quoted, got quoted on the, or chose on the Elizabeth Pond? I think it was two ponds, correct?
What, what was the question?
What, do you remember what we, what the price tag was for the Elizabeth?
Elizabeth was, uh, one-fifty-eight.
For two ponds, right?
For two ponds, yes, sir.
Right?
What is engineered soil?
It's a, a mixture of, uh, sand and compost.
Versus sand and?
Versus, uh, clay-type soil, which is probably what's, what's in the basin right now.
Okay, you used the word sand and soil before.
Uh, sand and compost.
Okay.
Okay, all right, continue.
So another concept, another aspect of, of this, uh, would be to, uh, line the low-flow channel and, uh, the, uh, the rain gardens with, uh, with rock walls, which would, uh, if, if part of the concern about how the basin looks right now is that it looks, uh, kind of overgrown and, and unkempt, uh, by adding, uh, some rock in there, it would, uh, define the different areas of, of the basin, and I think it would help to maybe, uh, give it a, a bit more of a, a formal, uh, and, uh, more organized, uh, appearance. So the, the total cost, uh, estimated for, for the, uh, the aspects that I've, that I've described, you know, for this, this project would be approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Mark, I'm, I'm kind of like, uh, probably in agreement with Eugene, and I'm not sure what this total cost will be. So if we say to go ahead and do this concept for a hundred and ten thousand, we still have more money that we're gonna spend on this.
No, the, a hundred and ten thousand dollars is, is the, is our cost, is our estimate of the construction cost for that option. For, for...
But you were saying that there was, uh, um, another option on this. But, Matt, do you know what I'm talking?
I, I think people are, are getting a little confused in terminology. Mark is explaining the rain garden, his, his, and his denotion on the, on the plans here, the rain garden is only the areas, um, that have the engineered soil along the edges. I think what we considered a rain garden was the entitlement of the whole property, the whole, the whole plot of land. The cost for the whole plot of land is a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So it's not that there's two different projects going on there, it's one project. And I think what we're, we're getting kind of messed, lost in is the terminology of the rain garden as, um, a defined engineering term versus the, the entirety rain garden of the property.
Okay, so for a hundred and ten thousand, we can get this completely done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Eugene.
That's if you choose, which there was a conversation raised, or ate, tonight, about putting rock up there. That's without discussion about the dirt that you talked about, and then, I believe, Mr. Jacobs brought up about maybe pu, pushing, pushing rock in there instead. So that could change this whole price tag, as what this council decided to do.
Well, that's, that, that would be a completely different, uh...
Ballpark.
Ballpark here, right. So what we're, what we're deciding on is, regardless of his question, do we want to go with this? If we decide we don't, then we're back to the drawing board again. So I think that's where our question comes in. Is this what we're gonna do, or we're not satisfied, we want to go back and add rock? Go ahead, Eugene.
So my concern here is we are doing two ponds on Elizabeth Park for a hundred and forty...
Sixty.
Hundred and sixty. Okay, now we're doing a hundred and ten here, being two ponds. To me, I think this price tag may be a little too high. Nope, minus twenty-five percent, I understand the grant, but it, we are not even, how far are you in submitting the grant? When's the deadline for the grant money to be submitted for this?
Well, I don't think we, we can apply for the grant until we approve, uh, a plan. Matt?
Yeah, I mean, this, if we, if you guys approve this project as it is, we can apply for a grant. We will be able to apply for the grant that is due next week. If there's modification, major modifications that need to be made to this, then we may not make, we may not make that grant submitted.
Okay, I, I'm gonna ask the obvious question, and it was said twice. We were saying that, uh, Elizabeth, two ponds for a hundred and sixty thousand, one pond for a hundred and ten. Can somebody explain the difference is why these two ponds were only a hundred and sixty, and this one's a hundred and ten? Maybe that, right, Eugene? Okay, so does anybody have that? Mark?
Yeah, so when, when you estimate the, the cost of, of a construction project, a, a good portion of the construction cost is the, uh, the, so the fixed cost of, of contractor mobilizing the project. So the larger the scale of the project, the smaller the unit prices are. I hope that makes sense? So there's an, an economy of scale to doing a bigger project. So even if you can, can do, uh, two ponds in close proximity for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that doesn't mean that the cost is eighty thousand dollars per pond.
Okay, I got you. Mayor?
I've got a question. I'm looking at this pond, okay, all I see is we're adding the manhole, and I see the same native grasses that's there, that we have. Okay, for me, when I look at that, I'm looking at a lot of weeds. Sorry. We're gonna spend a hundred and ten thousand, I mean, it may be a little easier for us to clean up, but is that, the goal for us is to make this easier for cle, for cleaning, and, I don't know, the way you were talking is, I think we can add the, the, the basin for eight thousand on the outside, and leave the middle the way it is, and maybe it won't get so muddy. It looks like a mud pit. The goal is to clean it up. We're asking those residents and businesses along the tracks to clean up the property, and we're gonna spend a hundred and ten thousand, and it's basically gonna look the same, maybe it'll be a little cleaner. I don't know, I'm just, I'm a little nervous. I don't want to spend a hundred and ten thousand, it's gonna look just like it looks right now.
Mark?
Yeah, and, and I think that's precisely the point of this presentation, is, um, you know, if, if one of the first goals of the project is to improve the appearance, the, the appearance is subjective. Uh, so the, you know, whether it looks nice or not depends on what you think looks nice. Uh, so the rain garden concept, uh, to a lot of people, the, the native plants that might be installed there, might be planted there intentionally, might not look a lot different from what's growing out there now. What the city would be getting for, you know, the, the cost of this project is, uh, there would be, uh, slope added to the bottom of the basin, which I think will help it drain out better. Uh, and, uh, and the, the rock along the edges, uh, as I said, would, uh, would help, give the, the pond a, maybe a, a more formal look, so it looks a little more organized. But absolutely, if, if the native plants themselves are going to look, by and large, the same as it does now, then, uh, my recommendation to this, to the city would, would not be to pay a hundred and ten thousand dollars to have something that ultimately you have the same concerns about. It would not be a good investment.
Pete?
One thing I wanted to mention, when I, when I asked about the rocks, originally, we were told that just on the west east side, they would put rock there because of the water drainage. So that was the only reason I asked, it had nothing to do with the rain garden. Instead of the engineered soil saying just the one side, putting some rock on there. And I think we had one time, we even had plans of putting rock... And I think we at one time, we even had plans of putting rock on that one side.
Good.
Yeah, I think we're still a little confused on the whole rock issue. We keep referencing two different rocks. In reality, the rocks that you're talking about were from the original concept before we started talking about a rain garden. Okay? These rocks that are in here now are the small smaller type rocks, if I'm not mistaken, that can be incorporated into the rain garden. We deviated away from that riprock system, that was just to improve the pond, nothing to do with the rain garden.
Tony?
Matt, maybe you can answer this question. Past flooding, how many homes flooded out there around that area? Would you know?
Oh, I would say none, as far as as far as I am underwear understand.
Good. Mayor?
The reason the homes, that area used to flood, the streets used to be closed quite a quite often around Ash and Potter. That's why that pond was put in there. Ever since that pond was put in there, that problem basically went away. I mean, the pond did what it's supposed to do. The problem is, you saw what it looked like when they took the picture, it's a mud pit. You're asking businesses and things to clean up along tracks, and that's pretty hypocritical if we're going to ask them to clean up, but we're going to leave a mud pit. So, the thing was the thing was to change it and make it look better. And, you know, I understand with the slope, that's going to help the mud, it's not going to flow or whatever, you know, it won't look as, I don't know.
Marcus, sounds like what we're what we're asking is, I know there's a lot of engineering that's being done here. And the question is, does that pond need that much engineering? And are we after just the look of it more than we are the engineering of it? I mean, do we need the catch basin? Do we need, you know, the the rocks around this and the dip and all that? I mean, I understand what you're saying with the slope. Can we get away with, just like you were saying, adding the the rock that makes it look more organized there? And if we do, would we get the same appeal that we're looking for? Because that's what we're all pretty concerned about, because the pond sounds like it's doing its job, but it looks terrible. So, I guess what I'm asking is, is that is all this engineering really required? And can we just make it look pretty without spending a hundred and ten thousand and still having that that detention area function properly? That always has to be our main concern. But again, if we overfunction it, you know, we were sending water somewhere else, and now it's somebody else's problem. So, my question is two things. Is the engineering that is at that pond right now efficient? And if so, can we just do something to make it look nicer?
Yeah, so there's 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 different directions this could go, and if if the overriding goal is to make it look better, I guess my question for you then is, what would you like it to look like? I think in this case, because you've got a basin that has a very flat slope, and there's a constant source of water coming into it, it's not realistic to think that turf grass will grow in the bottom of that. The turf grass will always be dead. So, if the goal is not to do much with the the bottom of the basin, I think your only option there is to have native plants or weeds that are growing out there now. But there could be some things to do to dress that up and make it look a little bit nicer. Those things, you you could add rock, and you could do some weeding, which is what would be required, you know, if you planted native plants out there, there would be several years of weeding to make sure that the right plants were growing. But there's there certainly are some things. My understanding of another project goal, though, was a rain garden, and and let's incorporate infiltration, and can we improve the quality of the runoff? Those things aren't going to happen without the engineered soils. And, you know, so if if the largest goal is to make it look nicer, I guess my question is, what would you like it to look like? And if the second goal is, let's keep the cost as low as possible, and that's a higher priority than improving the water quality, there are things that we can do. That's the kind of feedback I'm looking for.
Well, is the engineering that is present with this pond, is that is that efficient? I mean, and and if so, then I would think that our our main goal would be to make it look nicer and and not spend the money on the engineering if it if it doesn't need it. Because like the mayor's concern was, you know, we're going to spend a hundred and ten thousand, and we're still going to have it look the same, then I'd say forget it. Again, a concern is the engineering, but if you can tell me in this council that, yeah, that engineering is 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 good, then let's let's forget about all this engineering, and let's make the pond look nicer. Mayor?
Unfortunately, the pond, the way it is, it works the way it's supposed to work, just it looks like a mud pit. We were looking to clean it up, and again, I'm going to bring out this picture, and we were hoping it would look something like this and not what it looks like right now. As well, you know, I understand the rain garden, it filters down to the engineered soil or whatever you call it. But if it's going to look the same.
Eugene?
Can we go back to that manhole cover that you put in there? Everyone's saying right there, everyone's saying that thing looks like a mud. Let me ask you a question, and then you may.
And it smells like one, too.
So, my question is, if we go ahead and go back to the manhole cover in the street, we put that manhole cover in the street, will we have the sediment that we have on the bottom of that pond?
The the sediment on the bottom of the pond? You would have less.
We would have less. So, hear me out here. So, if we go ahead and spend, go back to the the manhole cover that we had there. So, if we go ahead and put that in there for whatever, five thousand, eight thousand, whatever it's going to cost, okay? That is still going to improve that pond regardless. The whole reason why that pond looks like garbage is because someone allowed them to discharge the water into that pond from the townhouses. So, what happens is those pipes added more problems to that pond than what we bid, because the water still sits there every time it rains, we discharge into their pond. So, those pipes are the number one. If we could put that clean out there, it's going to improve it, and that will be a lot lesser than a hundred and ten thousand dollars that you're talking about here. We talked about projects up here in the last couple council meetings about we need to start downsizing some of these projects and not doing as many big projects. Well, this is a perfect example. If we could put that manhole cover in for ten thousand or whatever it costs, that's a hundred thousand dollars and make it improve.
Mark, I I think again, you know, we're all pretty much voicing the same opinion here, is that, you know, is is all this money that we're going to be spending on the engineering part of it necessary? Or can we do minimum engineering like Alderman Eugene Wesley just said, and at the same time, do what the mayor just showed you as far as, you know, we we want that to look nice? You know, Potter Street has been ignored for a long time, and I think that if we can, again, showcase that little area and have the demand that we're having with the the owners of those property on Potter Street to clean up, we have to show in good faith, too. But yet, at the same time, it goes back to, is all that engineering needed? Or can we get away with what Alderman Wesley said? Can we do minimal engineering and put the money into having it look nice?
So, if if the project consisted just of of putting in a catch basin to trap the sediment, there would be an an improvement in the water quality, there would there would trap sediment, there's no doubt about that. I think you still would have the same appearance problems in the basin, it still would have a flat bottom, and it still would have the water draining in from the foundation drains. It wouldn't travel across the bottom of the basin, so it would vary between the two extremes in the photos that I showed. You would have sometimes kind of a barren mud pit, and then other times an an overgrown, unkempt basin.
So, what we're saying is, is that we can't have a nice looking pond without doing engineering?
I I think the the level of of work, you know, going if if we started, if we say the eight thousand dollars to put the catch basin in is is the is the minimum, and what I've presented to you as, you know, is is the maximum, a hundred and ten thousand dollars, there's varying degrees of engineering, so to speak, that you can do in between there. I think each step, you know, the the more engineering you do, the the better quality of product will be, the higher likelihood of success. But if there is a a certain appearance that you're looking for, or a certain dollar amount that you're shooting for as the target, I think we can tailor the design to to meet your needs.
Pete?
Prior to this, I mean, we already had designs, did we not, Jeff?
Jeff?
No, we just had a conceptual drawing, there was never any actual design work, am I correct, though?
Correct.
Did you see those designs or?
They did.
Yeah.
Okay, so I mean, we already have the, if we just wanted rock there, and we already kind of have that, and we already have the estimated cost, do we have that? Do you, Jeff, know the estimated cost with dollars?
I mean, that was the, if you remember back in October, the first time we brought this one to the board, to the committee, that was the first concept, it was sixty, seventy thousand dollars, and then there was there was three different options. There was one with a pump in there, it was a hundred and fifty or something, and there was one for seventy thousand. And then and then we brought it back because you guys wanted a rain garden, so then we brought back this concept. So, there's other, now, there's no designs other than this. There's concepts in kind of fifty thousand foot views of cost, but this is the first time that we've actually asked Baxor Women to actually put together a an actual design and not just a kind of a theory.
Go ahead, Pete.
Well, I mean, we need to do something, because for several reasons, the mayor's already said a couple of them, we have problems with mosquitoes over there. So, something's got to be done, and we've talked about it, we budgeted for this. So, personally, I don't care if it's a rain garden or not, but it should look nicer. I mean, if we could get the plants that the mayor's showing, that would be great. You know, I don't want to see the plants in there that look like weeds. I mean, I agree with the mayor, the some of those plants you showed us look like weeds. I mean, I'd rather prefer our just a rock bottom if we're going to have plants in there like that.
Good, Mark.
Yeah. The the photograph that that the mayor showed us, I I guess I couldn't tell from from this distance, but it looked like it had clusters of plants together with some space in between. And typically, in a in a garden or a rain garden, that space between is is mulched. I wouldn't recommend mulch on the bottom of a detention basin, because every time it rains, the basin is supposed to fill, and that mulch is going to float, and it'll be gone. That mulch you can have in a in a rain garden or a, you know, a swale or a ditch, because by and large, most of the flow is going to be sort of at the bottom of the ditch, and you might see rock along the bottom of the ditch and then plants on the sides with some mulch. But I would say that's, to me, I maybe you could put you could put you could put plant clusters of plants that you like, and then rock in between in the bottom. If that's a design that you like, then then that could be that could be accomplished.
Mark?
Yeah, as I've been sitting and listening to this, I mean, I I think I've narrowed it personally down to either don't do anything, or you have to do the engineering. Each step in that engineering, as Mark alluded to, improves the quality of that pond. Right now, it's got poor drainage, it doesn't drain out, we're stuck with those buildings draining into it all the time, so that moisture's there. So, unless you're allowed to evacuate that moisture, which is why they have the engineered soil and the three whatever, three percent slope you're putting in there, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I just threw that in. And then the center drainage ditch is to speed up the flow or evacuate that water and dry it out. So, as long as we can, I think the concept is, as long as we can maintain that in a drier state, we're going to have a better looking pond. If we if that pond's left to where it's wet at the bottom all the time, you're typically not going to get anything to grow, those are just facts. So, if we weren't going to do anything in the pond, for me, it doesn't even make sense to do the catch basin, because we're only catching minimal stuff, most of it's flowing over the road into the ditch anyway, and then the other water's coming from the buildings. So, unless you improve that bottom, its ability to move or evacuate or absorb the water, you're not going to improve it. So, without that, we're going to have the same pond, and to get it look nicer, we got to do the engineering and then do the planting. And the planting will come out a little better, it's not going to be as bad as it is. I mean, and and what Mark just brought up with the stone, maybe you throw that stone, and that'll help it make make it look a little better. I don't know what those numbers are either. But I I don't see it improving without doing the majority of the engineering that they recommend it, because those are making the change of getting the water out of there.
Right, and I think that's that's what I needed to hear. You know, the necessity of that engineering, you know, if we if we don't do it, we're right back to where we're at again. Mike?
It's for the attorney, I wasn't on on the board when this was allowed to happen, the pumping of, I don't know, this is some pump, you said, Matt?
It was foundation drains as well as roof gutter drains.
Is is there anything the city can do to make them turn, like, instead of having to come through the wall, turn it down, the retaining, send it down along to the drainage ditch that's already at the railroad?
Well, I'm thinking, Mike, in in.
Just to try and alleviate the the constant water.
But I think that water goes eventually there anyway.
Yeah, but trying to keep this dry is what I'm my point is, is stop having the constant flow of water coming into that one section is what everybody seems to be leading to, other than our natural rainfall.
Well, right, but again, I'm thinking that before that was even there, we had a lot of water on those streets. So, if we take that out, where are they going, where is it going to run?
They can run it down the down the wall to the ditch that's on the other side, instead of constantly filling the retaining wall.
Matt, do you have any answer on that?
I think this was, yeah, this was discussed at one other time, if if Attorney Bond would like to.
Go ahead, Pat.
I mean, it's very limited what the what the city can do in that regard, and at the end of the day, as Almanozar said, you you end up, it's getting there anyway, it's just it's the path that it's taking. So, you're if the city did have some recourse, it wouldn't accomplish much, frankly.
I'm trying to alleviate the amount of water coming in at all times, instead of just during rains.
Go ahead, Pete.
I I'd like to make a motion to approve this, but do some different types of plantings, like the mayor showed, with the engineering, like Alderman Wood showed, to get this project up and running and to be able to apply for that grant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor?
Yeah, Mark, I'm looking at this picture I showed you, and they have a lot of stone and whatnot, not, and there's no mulch, because I believe going through this, I I know, they probably have the engineered soil on the bottom where it all just trickles down and flows. I know this is a little different. Question on the plantings, I mean, I know the slope, and I asked you this beforehand, probably going to help the way it looks, but some of those plantings, I mean, can you put a, like, some bushes or it gets too deep, they'll be flooded and they'll be they'll be garbage, is that with the bushes, if we put some boxwoods or trees or something?
There are there are a variety of of types of plants that can survive in, you know, in with wet feet, so to speak. So, there are grasses, there are plants, there are flowering plants. I'd have to take a look and see, you know, what kinds of bushes and trubs could survive. But at the very least, if the goal was to kind of try to work something like that in, you know, maybe those could be at sort of the higher levels of of the basin. And so, based on the feedback, I'm I'm understanding that you you want it to look less wild and overgrown and and a little more formal. And so, I'm not our plants expert, we've got, I've got engineers and scientists on staff that I can bring this information back, and we can, you know, take a look at the plant list and and come up with something that that I think meets objectives.
Okay, great. Can I have a roll call on this, please?
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Woods?
I think he wants you to come back to him. Oh, say something.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
No.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Count them up.
Before it's saying, didn't, now you just changed, did they just change it? He's voting for it and he said he can change it?
Basically, if we want to change some of the plantings in there, I mean, we can add more stone instead of this wild-
That's gonna change the price, so we're voting on this price. So we don't know what the final price is gonna be.
Do we have to vote on the price and can't we just go ahead?
Jeff, can you answer that?
Hold on, hold on a second.
Hold on, please. Jeff?
What you're doing-
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead, Mayor.
You spend up to a hundred and ten thousand. If you want to do more plantings, you can always do that in the future. I mean, see how it looks with what you get.
Go ahead, Jeff.
We're not, we're not spending up to a hundred and ten thousand tonight, though. Tonight, we came to, similar to the Elizabeth ponds, with direction to move forward with the rain garden concept. We could have deviated from that after tonight, but we wanted direction on how you want the rain garden structured. We budgeted a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the rain garden. We have an estimate here of around a hundred and ten. I'm sure that Mr. Phillips will stay within the budgeted amount, maybe around the hundred and ten, maybe more, maybe less. But we just need a direction on what you want the rain garden to look like. You've already committed to doing a rain garden in the area, and this was a chance to maybe deviate. But we'll apply for the grant, proceed on with the rain garden, and keep it within the budgeted amount. We don't know the actual cost at this point.
Okay.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Mine's a no.
And that passes.
Can I ask a question?
Thank you.
Hi, is it on this?
Yeah. If we don't get the grant, where's it going, guys?
We don't know yet. How can, how can we know?
This is just to go for the-
I mean, it's a maybe, it would have been, could have been. I mean, if we don't get it, then we'll, we'll have to talk about this further. Jeff?
Yeah, like I stated, we, the, the council allocated monies for this project. If we get the grant, it's a bonus. Even if we don't get the grant, you budgeted enough to pay for the project.
Okay, I'd like to move on, please. A report and recommendation, approval of final payment requests to John Neary Construction for the Woodside Subdivision Drainage Project in an amount not to exceed five thousand nine hundred forty-one dollars and fifteen cents. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Art?
I got a question in there. It references our warranty. And I was just wondering, do we have a copy of what our actual warranties are on these things? Is there, is there anything in writing that-
Ned, do you know?
Jeremy.
Jeremy.
Alderman Lozara, for this project, the warranty is actually just contractually based. It's in the, the contract we have with the contractor. It's not a, a maintenance bond or anything like that afterwards, so it is a, a written contractual warranty.
But is there some delineation of what their, you know, if their street cracks, but it has to crack two inches or?
Uh, it's any material defects.
Any, and, and who's the governing body that determines what's a material defect?
Go ahead.
Mr. Bond?
Oh.
I mean, ultimately, that comes down to that workmanlike manner that we've talked about here on a number of occasions. That would be the determining factor. And ultimately, I suppose, a court, if we disagree on what, whether or not it was, it's material. In other words, it was not constructed in a workmanlike manner, you know, that would end up in court and a judge would make that determination. But it's gotta be, you know, it's, it's not these minor deviations. I know we talked about maybe the sidewalk in another project and things like that. You know, it's not perfect. It's gotta be something that's going to affect the use for which that, that is intended, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like we have to go with common sense on that one, huh? All in favor? What, did I get a second on it?
Yeah, team, second.
Okay. Do we need a roll call? Yeah, not for five thousand. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That passes. And report and recommendation approval of partial payment request number twelve to Williams Brothers Construction, Inc. for the N W W T P upgrades project phase one B in an amount not to exceed one million five hundred two thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Art?
I don't know if this one's for Matt, for Pat, or the city manager. But in, in the contractor's statements, they delineate the payments and the retention. We have credits in there. And the credits, as they carry through, there's a retention on the credit which reduces the actual retention the contractors were holding on the contractor because it carries over as a negative number. Is, should that be that way, or is that something? Because it's not too bad now. The dollar, I think it only comes out to ten thousand dollars. So effectively, he's reducing his retention of seven hundred and fifty by ten thousand dollars. But when I looked at it, I want, there are probably cases where that number could get a little larger, carrying some numbers over.
I think ultimately, that'll come out in the wash because the credits that we are receiving for different parts of the project are going, are being turned around and paying for additional parts of the project and that are gonna be then over budget, over the line item budget.
Right, and that, that part I get, so I'm not worried about the amount of money we're spending. But if, what I'm saying to you is if we're supposed to have eight hundred and fifty thousand in retention, doing the credits that way reduce the retention to a lesser number. It's not gonna affect how much we pay. It just affects how much we have in retention. So if the goal is to have five percent in detention, when you transfer credits through, you now no longer have a total, totality of five percent. Just something to look into. We don't have to solve this problem right now. I'm just-
Okay.
Okay, all right. Oh, sorry, right, I didn't see your answer.
This is, uh, how many more payments we got? This is twelve. How many more are there?
Go ahead.
How many, how many is this gonna go up to, twenty-four, twenty-five?
Well, this is November's, so we got December, January, February, March, April, May, June, July. So another, another eight, nine before a final.
Okay.
So we'll probably be in the twenties.
Are we still, are we still online with the funds here?
Um, yeah.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wes-
And that passes. Report and recommendation, implementation of an A V L system with the Public Works Department. Matt, I'm gonna turn that over to you.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have been asked to bring forward a presentation on the implementation of A V L system for our public works vehicles. So tonight, basically, what I'd like to do is kind of go over a little bit about what the A V L systems entail, what we're looking to capture out of it, and just get kind of a consensus from the, the board on whether or not we should move forward with the A V L system, and if we should move forward in, in the, in the way that we, the way that we are thinking about it as a department. All right, so basically, just a little information. What is an A V L system? It's advanced vehicle locating. It's similar to OnStar, kind of tells you where you're at, what's going on. Provides a GPS locating service as well as some diagnostics. It kind of runs a gambit of what it can do and what it can't do. Yes, sir?
Mayor?
When you say diagnostics, are you talking about the engine?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it, the, we can get this thing to do just about whatever we want it to do. And that's kind of where we're at right now. We're trying to see where, what we want it to do. We can get it to tell us how fast you're going, if, what the braking rates are. And, but it can also go, it can also hook into your O D O ports and tell you, if there's a check engine light comes on, I could automatically get an email, or my mechanics could automatically get an email that says, "Hey, truck two forty-two just got a, check engine light came on and the code is," this is what the code is. So it does, can do all those kinds, there's, there's a thousand ways to skin this cat, pretty much, is what I'm, what I'm trying to say. There's a, there's a lot of different layers to this project.
Right, because this, this program, you don't have to have this.
No.
Right.
No, you don't need to have that part of it.
Right, this is what he's suggesting, because I have this system and I do not have the diagnostic service. Go ahead, Mayor.
So it's gonna be my next. So if we wanted the diagnostics, it would cost extra?
Yeah. It can also provide all kinds of other information and data within the vehicle, and I'll kind of go through some of those as we walk through this. All right, so kind of came up with like, almost like a pros and cons list of, of why A V Ls are good in public works vehicles. Pros, fuel economy. We can check and see what their idle times are. See how they're driving their vehicles, where they're driving their vehicles. Are they taking the most direct routes to places? So better fuel economy, less fuel purchase. Less fuel purchase, save some money. Alderman Woods?
Go ahead, Art.
So what cost monitoring and sifting through that day, data, what's the cost to save what? We're gonna spend ten thousand to save five hundred, or are we spending five hundred to save ten thousand? That's my question.
That's a good question.
Probably-
Go ahead, Matt.
I would probably say you're spending ten thousand to save five hundred, maybe a thousand, maybe two thousand. I don't know. And you'd, and we don't have any data to work off of, so I don't know exactly how much savings we're gonna have by, but these are some of the things that it can do.
Matt, do we know of any other public works in the area that is currently using this system?
I know for sure Bensonville is. I can, I know Blooming, I'm pretty sure Bloomingdale is, Downers Grove does. There are other people that utilize this concept.
Do we know how that's working for them?
We have not gone out and asked other people what they're doing. There's, I think maybe, maybe if I can kind of go through some of this, it might answer some of these questions.
Okay.
And then we can kind of wrap it up at the end. Because I think getting to, getting the understanding of what the board wants as in, in an A V L system will ultimately give us the answers that we, that we're searching for.
Why don't you go ahead and appreciate that?
All right. Response time, the closest vehicle response to a, a day-to-day work emergency. Say there's a, we get a call from a resident who's got a sewer backup problem. I can look on the, I could look on the computer, find out who's the closest guy to that location, dispatch that person, instead of having somebody from across town drive past three other public works vehicles before they get to the resident's house. So that might be of some benefit to us. Improved driver safety, monitoring speeds, braking rates. If, if employees know that we're monitoring their speed, they're going to become safer drivers. Whether or not we enforce, use it as a, a tool for enforcement, sometimes the fear factor in it is, is better than always the hammer dropping on them. And what studies have shown in the use of A V Ls is that self-correction of the drivers happens rather rapidly over the first couple of months of the program. Liability, we know where our vehicles are if there's accident or damage. Your snowplow ran into my car at the corner of Ash and Commercial. What time was it? It was at two thirty. Yeah, we didn't have anybody there between one and five o'clock in the morning. We couldn't have hit your vehicle at two, we couldn't have knocked over your, your mailbox at three o'clock in the afternoon because we weren't plowing down that street between the hours of two and four o'clock.
Go ahead, Art.
We might be at the end. This sounds great, and, and my concern is the same as the first one, but that being said, is this the entry level to get in? I'm sure this thing can do a million things. Just given our geographic area, I don't think we need the million things. So I think the basic kit is what we're looking for. Is, is that what we're talking about, the, the initial ten thousand twenty-five? And, and why is there that big a difference? What makes the difference on the install?
Okay. The basic kit will tell you that truck A is in this location. It will tell you where truck A has been. It may tell you how fast truck A is going.
It may tell us?
Depending on what system we get. There's diff, there's different companies out there, different systems. Basic, basic will say truck A is at this location at this time, whenever it pings. Whether it pings every minute, whether it pings every five seconds, whether it pings every five minutes. That's, that's bare bones, okay? If you want the deluxe, you know, super club sandwich with the bacon and the tomato on it-
That's not good for you, the bacon.
Yeah, then you want the one that says, "This is truck A. The driver is Arthur Wesley," or Arthur, yes, see, Arthur Wesley. It's a combination of all my favorite people.
Please, please.
That, that's a bad omen.
Doesn't make sense. Forget it, forget it.
The, the driver is Matthew York. He's driving down the street. He's going seventy-two miles an hour. His plow is down, his salt spreader is on, he's dumping six hundred tons per lane mile. And he is, he's got his lights on, his lights are off, but his radio is on. I mean, that, those, that, that's kind of the difference. And I'm pinging every two seconds versus pinging every minute or every five minutes.
Art, I, I want to just kind of interject here. I have this system on my trucks. And it is basically, you know, you can pick whatever you want. It, it really depends on the purpose that we're looking for. So it's an open menu, you know, like what Matt was saying, here's what possibly we would like to see. We can eliminate anything, we can add anything. It's, it's a menu. Go ahead, Art.
I'll make a motion to approve moving forward with the basic package.
Second that.
Well, do we know what the basic package is?
Bring the menu.
No, because I think that we're looking at a couple of different vendors. Correct me if I'm wrong, so we don't, no.
Well, the basic package is GPS, and that's it.
Let me just skip to the very last page. Thank you. Let me just, let me just, there we go. There we go, we just saved twenty minutes. Okay, so basically, what we're looking to do is a basic A V L tracking system that will allow us to look at location, speed, idling time, and geo fencing. Geo fencing is to say, I don't want any of my vehicles to go outside the city limits or maybe a half mile outside of the city limits. Or I don't want any of my trucks leaving the garage between the hours of four in the afternoon and six o'clock in the morning without, without me being notified. So that would be basically what we're looking for at this point in time. After a three-year period, which seems to be kind of the basic, kind of entry, jump into these people for a contract after three years, to reevaluate it and maybe try to add maybe some tomatoes or mustard to the, to the sandwich.
Mustard, relish, a couple of hot peppers, sport peppers.
Yeah, sports peppers.
Go ahead, Art.
So, and, and this is, this one's to you, since you-
Okay.
You have trucks and you use it, so this is working for you, and I'm assuming there's a, a return on your investment, so you like it. So I'm, I'm, I'll take your lead. I made the motion. It's been seconded.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, like I said, it, it works great, at least for, for my purpose. I would like to have you reach out to the communities that have this. I would like to, um, have you reach out to the communities that have this and kind of get their feedback on it, and I'd like to see what they feel about it. Eugene?
We, we have talked about this for several years, okay? I don't know why this department, public works departments ain't different than all the squad cars being done. The way I look at it, we should be treating, I, I understand it, but it says it's going to take three years to put it in play.
Yeah, I think you're reading that.
We're gonna preview it for three years.
Yeah.
Matt, are you putting all the trucks online at the same time?
Yes, the goal, the goal of this project is to put all forty-three public works vehicles online with this basic tracking system at the same time.
Okay.
Jeff?
Yes, and just a refresher as to what we're actually doing here tonight, and to take you back to when we kind of hit on this before. We were coming to you tonight for direction on where to move come budget season. We were going to see if the council liked ABL. There wasn't really a consensus if you wanted ABL the last time we spoke about it. So, don't think that because we're approving the concept of ABL, we're gonna get it in the trucks next month. It's not gonna happen until after May one, because we needed this conversation to figure out our specs to include in this, uh, year's budget discussion.
Right.
Just as a reminder, so everybody knows.
Any other questions, if not, like, oh, Pat?
Yeah, just a, uh, comment, this is, while you do have the management right, they're your vehicles, the, the city vehicles. Uh, you should recognize that there is a requirement, you'd have to give the union notice, uh, and, you know, it could be considered a change in the current work conditions. Uh, there's some limitations as to what you can use that, uh, information for in terms of, uh, discipline and so forth. And I think, uh, uh, Mr. York has delineated what the reason and rationale for that is. But, just so the council's aware that those, those limitations do exist.
Yeah, 'cause we never let the wives know where the trucks are parked, so.
I wouldn't want GPS on my car.
Right, no, you wouldn't. Like to do, oh, Tony, go ahead.
How are we, um, handling it right now without the system, as far as, um, knowing where the trucks are and?
Well, I mean, guys go out to do their job during the day, I mean, we call them on the radio, we call them on their phone, um, if we need to know where they're at. And I guess we, we are, um, hopeful that they are truthful with us and that they are, uh, cognizant of their, their purpose of doing their job. So, I mean, this is, this is another way to, uh, um, to assist us in an operational aspect to make sure that our operations are done to their fullest extent possible and to be the most efficient department that we can be. With that being said, um, I'm not going to have the ABL system up on my computer twenty-four hours of the day or the eight hour, eight hours, nine hours, ten hours of the day that I'm at work. We're not gonna have somebody that monitors it all the time, we just don't, we don't have the personnel to do that either. So, it may be reactionary, um, it may be to be able to utilize it for some of these emergency situations. So, it's not gonna be something that we're, um, that we're monitoring twenty-four hours of the day.
Well, Matt, what, what I noticed when I was, uh, still using it, um, is the wear and tear, um, has cut down. Actually, even oil changes, um, have been cut down because of this. So, it, it, it does save money, like, again, Eric, we don't know how much it's gonna cost us to monitor it versus how much it's gonna save us, but it's a pretty easy program to monitor. But, go ahead, Eric, you have a question?
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, I, and I'm in favor of that, I don't want my first statement to say I was trying to knock it, but just that we recognize, I don't want to spend a million dollars to save ten dollars. That being said, it would be nice now to get the information that we've asked for many times, and that is log histories on vehicles, how many hours does this vehicle run? Is it completely necessary? How many hours do we put on the plow truck versus the pickup trucks and, and stuff like that? And then, how do we treat that? How do we set up a regular maintenance schedule? We've talked about all these things, and this will help build that next step of the maintenance. And I think that's what you're hitting on, that you find that you reduce the amount of maintenance that you need, i.e. oil changes, and obviously there's be some gas savings and, and, and other stuff, and total maintenance repair on vehicles and unnecessary trips maybe at some point, so. I'm, I'm, I'm in favor.
Mike?
Matt, will this help in the resale of the used vehicles? Will you be able to pull documentation off a file to show that it is actually like those facts? Whatever they call car facts and stuff, I mean, would you be able to pull, uh, working times, idle times, somebody doesn't believe you?
Um, I don't know if I can do that, because I don't know what the system that we're gonna ultimately get into.
But, I might as well have a system like that.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
Mike, I, I, I might be able to answer that. You, uh, you can. In other words, I can tell you if my truck is going down the road, uh, at seventy-five or eighty miles an hour. What you can probably tell, um, a prospect as far as someone to buy your truck, that the truck hasn't been abused, and here's proof of it. You can give it more accurate, uh, uh, maintenance, um, charts. You know, so, yeah, there, there is a way that it, it can help with sell, some of the, uh, Pete, go ahead.
As far as if a resident does call in and say, well, my mailbox, they plowed over my mailbox, how far back could you go to figure out that, yes, we did indeed? If, you know, I call you two weeks from now and, and, you know, forget to call you, could you go back two weeks and say, yes, we did have a plow truck on your street last Monday and?
I, I think that all depends on what package you go with. They're only gonna save data for so long. I think most of them are usually about a month, but, um, I would think anything more than probably two to three weeks. I mean, I would think that would probably be about the extent that we would need to go back and do historical data and those kind of things for actual locations of those kinds of things.
Go ahead, Pete.
And this may be a silly question, but, uh, I, I've always heard these systems referred to as GPS instead of ABS. There, it's the same thing, right? There's no difference?
Matt?
GPS is Geopositioning System, ABL is Advanced Vehicle Locating. So, you use the Advanced Vehicle Locator to tell you where, what your GPS is.
Any more questions? Roll call, please.
So, this vote is...
Oh, Tony, I'm sorry.
No, this vote is just to go forward, we're not gonna be voting, we don't know what the prices are, it's just to go forward.
Budget.
Okay.
I don't know if we need a roll call then, alright? We do, new, okay, roll call.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Rory Wesley? Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
And that passes. Reporting recommendation, purchase of a new two-point-five-ton dump truck in an amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars. That is my motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Wright?
One faster one. This, I was trying to read through all the paperwork there. Comes, DeMorel?
Yes.
You get a new plow with that now?
Yes.
So, new salt spreader on that too?
Go ahead.
Yes, everything will be brand-new on this equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Rory Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
And that passes. And items to be considered at future meetings. I have one that I'd like to bring up, um, Matt, if we can. I'd like to see a place for stormwater agenda, um, kind of permanently on here. If we don't have a report, then we don't have a report, but if we could just, um, always have at least that line item. Anyone else have anything? Mike?
The street sweep, sweeping program?
Yeah, that's gonna be coming up, uh...
Is that what you and I?
We have tree code, update, and street sweeping program coming up in January, um, January eighth, twenty fifteen. Any other items?
Uh, what about an update on Potter Street? What's going on with the trees that we were talking about originally?
The trees? As far as what, um?
Behind the, behind on Potter, by the tracks.
Okay, yeah.
An update on that, yeah.
Okay, that's... Okay. Anything else? Go ahead, uh, Wright?
The tree code, is that, can we have an update on the tree trimming?
The tree?
Trimming.
Tree trimming, uh, yes, you'll have a, uh, update, uh, probably either this week or next week in the packet. We're gonna try to put that out, um, regularly in the packet for you.
So, we're gonna come up with a program, Ward one, Ward two?
Yes, we have that program in place.
Okay. Could we, could we get, so we're gonna do it monthly?
Uh, quarterly.
Quarterly, yeah, quarterly.
Quarterly, we're gonna...
Quarterly and a monthly, so, four times a year.
And you're managing?
And, no, and the monthly report and that monthly staff report.
Okay.
Alright.
Anything else?
Nope.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, meaning adjourn.
Call the Finance and Administration Committee to, to order. For the minute takers, show that all the, all those are here, are still here. Uh, and approval of minutes for November thirteenth.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries, they have a rec, reporting recommendation for joint liability for water service. Mr. Brad, is he?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May recall back in, uh, late August, we came to you with a number of water code updates, and one of them was this joint liability issue. At that time, the committee wanted staff to go back and get a little more information and, uh, some, uh, guidance and opinion from, uh, legal. Uh, so, what was provided to you in the packet was the, uh, opinion letter from Bond Dixon, along with some examples of surrounding communities that are doing this exact thing currently. Uh, and at this point, uh, staff is looking for direction, um, as to whether or not to go forward, with the attorney to draft the appropriate ordinances or where to go. And I think I'll defer to Mr. Bond for, for any further commentary.
Mr. Brown? Yeah, and I think you've got a copy of, uh, of our memo. What it does is, under the, uh, the municipal code, the, uh, a unit of local government that provides, uh, provides that service is allowed to lien the property if there is a delinquency in order to get, uh, recovery. Uh, private utilities, com ed, and those, those people cannot, they would have to run to court and try and track that down. By having the, uh, the owner of the property as well as, uh, as any tenant being what's called joint and severally liable, what that means is they're both liable, you can go after one or the other. So, it would be easier from our standpoint, from your legal representative, to have the option to go after the lowest hanging fruit, if you will. In other words, where are you gonna get the money from? You can cha, cha, you know, chase a tenant around who might move out of town, might move out of state, might move somewhere else, and you'll have absolutely no success, you're gonna spend money on attorney's fees and court costs and so forth to try and collect, uh, a delinquent bill that you're never going to collect. In the alternative, you can place a lien on the, and we do that all the time, we place, uh, water liens, place a lien on the property, and, uh, recover if not immediately to, to go ahead and, and pursue the lien. Uh, you, you have the right, anytime the property is going to be transferred, that's a cloud on title, and it's a, uh, cloud that is recognized by the, by lenders, recognized by title companies, and ultimately the courts. So, you've got a, you, you've got a way, a mechanism whereby we can recover it. And we've had the discussion on some of the properties that the, uh, that the city's acquired, where there were actually liens, city liens on, on those properties. So, by having joint and several liability, it gives the city the, uh, greater likelihood of recovering for those delinquent water charges. It certainly gives, as legal counsel, it gives us additional ammunition to be able to go after and recover that in a much more effective way on behalf of the, uh, city.
Mayor?
And regarding the rentals, I mean, right now, we have a fifty-dollar water deposit for everybody. It's just the right time to possibly maybe, on rentals, on rentals only, raise a deposit. So, when we come into an issue, some, some other communities I know charge anywhere between a hundred and fifty and two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, we charge fifty for rentals. I mean, I know the landlord gets his security deposit, but maybe this is something we wanna look at just to avoid some, you know, legal issues. Could save some money on legal, it'd be nice.
All those are?
Brad, if we decide to hold the, um, the landowner responsible, are we going to send out notices to them to let them know that, um, we're holding them responsible?
Brad?
Sure, um, as a matter of, of practice, to the extent that we, we can, the way the code is written right now, we, we try to do that right now. Um, I know when this came up in August, we had discussed, uh, amending the, uh, rental housing agreement form with the building department to include that language in there. And, you know, that's certainly something that would be easily, uh, easily done, so we can add that language in there. And then, there's a couple other distribution methods that we could use, um, as well to make the, uh, the landlord notified of that as well.
Yeah, my concern is basically if I'm a landowner and I'm renting, I, I would probably increase my security deposit because of this. And I would think this is something very important for, uh, for the landowners to know. Thanks, Mayor.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah. Probably will come and smell surprised, I... I'm not in favor of this at all. I mean, it, it's, it's ridiculous to say that we can, you know, put the responsibility for one person on, on the landowner. Essentially, that guy could get pissed at you and run the water for the next ninety days and leave you with a water bill. I mean, it's ridiculous that we can even think that that's, uh, something that we'd wanna entertain, tame doing. I mean, every other utility, and I know just because state statute says we have the ability, if they're overdue and late, that we can put a lien on the property, isn't necessarily a good reason to actually do that. I mean, I would, I would look for, more towards requiring, you know, a bigger deposit for, for renters. To the point that Mr. Laz, Mr. Lazaro raised, that we could raise the, uh, security deposit, well, we could do that, but then we are not competitive in the market. If I have to make my security deposit five hundred more than the guy across the street in Bensonville or Addison or Itasca, they're gonna go over there, because they're not gonna pay the extra. And even if they paid the extra, again, if there's an issue, obviously, if that guy's not paying the water bill, typically, they're not paying the rent either, so the landowner's not only getting abused by not collecting his rent, the building may be being damaged, now we're gonna saddle him with the water bill that now nobody cares about, 'cause we can just run it, and run it, and run it. We can move ten people in and let the water run, nobody shuts it off. And here, nowhere does it say that you're gonna give me the ability to cut the bill off. You can run it for two years and I gotta pay the guy's water bill. Not, eh, well, statute says we can go put a lien on your property. That's ridiculous, I, I vehemently oppose doing this.
Brad?
I guess just to, not to specifically debate that, but, uh, the more draconian approach is if you run the water for a month, you walk away, we can't bill anybody, we just bought water from the DuPage Water Commission that nobody's paid for. So, now, the rest of the residents of the city have to subsidize the renter bailing on their bill. And if you get enough people doing that, then we have to raise the water rates to subsidize all these renters walking out of town. Because we have no, because we have no recourse.
And I, and I get that, but where, where, where is it that I should take that responsibility? How is it that you're able to then put that on me? I'm not making any more, money selling the water, it's not part of my business model or renting model. You know, I don't have a master community where I buy bulk water and I spread it to the units. You know, so, you're, you're gonna get five people to default on six thousand. I might have one property and that guy's running two-hundred-dollar water deals every month, and it's gonna take me, I'm in court trying to get him out, takes me a year to get him out, so when I come back, not only do I lose the rent for a year, I gotta pay you twenty-four-hundred dollars plus fines and fees, which probably would put it at about five thousand dollars, that's absurd to me.
Yeah, the other, the other point is if the tenant isn't paying their bill, it would follow the normal shut-off process. And at that seventy-two-day mark, give or take, the water would be shut off, so at that point...
Well, it's seventy-two days, how much is seventy-two days' worth of water for a normal family? That's our new deposit, let's change the motion to add a higher deposit, seventy-two days' cost of water, and that can fluctuate as the water rates go up. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Well, how much is that, then?
Anthony, I, I had a question first.
Yeah, what, what is the percentage of renters that are behind on their, uh, water bill? Do we have that? In the homes?
Renters that are behind on their water bill? I don't know, as a percentage of the rental base, um, the, I'd take a little digging into to, to extract that number, and how many people are... I don't know, as a percentage of the rental base, um, the, I'd take a little digging into to, to extract that number, and how many people are behind on their bill, but I don't know. Relative, relative to the re- to the rental base, yeah.
And, um, and also, I mean, once the person gets behind, h- h- how much time do we have that, as far as notifying the property owner that your tenant's behind on that water bill? Does that happen right away, a week, two weeks, or?
Sure, the, the landlord gets, uh, everything that we send to the tenant, the landlord gets, so even if they pay every month, they have a zero balance every month.
Okay.
Landlord gets a copy of every bill, every delinquent notice, every shut-off notice, so from day one, uh, the landlord is getting copies of, of that information to know if their, uh, tenant's falling behind, or if they're staying current or not.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor?
Hey, Brad, I gotta have a question. You just said seventy-two days, or whatever, however the process works, when somebody starts falling behind, and there's a penalty of five percent, or whatever. And maybe it's a legal question. Can we change it for, specifically for rentals? I mean, raise a deposit and change, you know, if they're late, after ten days, they get the notice, and when can you shut them off? Instead, does it still have to be that time period? I don't know.
Mr. Brown?
And my response should not be reflective of the mayor's attempt to cut my, uh, work my direction, but, um, you, you would run into a problem, because what you're, you're, the deposit is designed and intended to reasonably reflect the risk and so forth, and there's not really a, 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 a different cost to the, uh, city for a renter versus- Now, you may have more incident with renters than with, you know, uh, owner occupied, uh, but there's not a different cost to the, the, uh, the city, so you could end up with a challenge to that differen- It makes sense, makes perfect sense, but I think you run into a, uh, a, a challenge if you do that, be to, you know, you're dis- on the deposit, because you're discriminating against two users of the water. The only difference is, one doesn't own the property and one, one does, and that's not a distinction. Uh, you know, a commercial versus residential, you can differentiate those and, and discriminate on that basis, but on, you know, two residential users, both of whom are going to be using the water, the only difference in their status is one is a tenant and one is an owner, uh, would be subject to a challenge. And just if I could just comment briefly, the, um, briefly, the, the, as Mr. Wilson indicated, the landlord, or the, the landlord is being put on notice now. If, uh, i- and, and most residential leases have a provision in there that the, uh, tenant is required to comply with all, uh, city, village, state, and the local ordinances code, so on and so forth, and, and not allow any kind of lien or encumbrance to be, uh, imposed upon the property. So landlord would have recourse if the, and the landlord would, would know that right away, that the, uh, tenant is not paying their bill, the city's going to give them notice. The landlord would have recourse against the property owner. Uh, the, the, the benefit of having the joint and several liability does not, a- as was suggested, does not saddle the taxpayers, the residents of the city, to foot the bill for one of these tenants that Alderman Woods suggested, uh, and they're out there, we all know they're out there. But the question is, i- if, if that happens, the taxpayers are, are, are sup- supplementing that, uh, particular cost, and the landlord, and, and the, if you don't make the, the, the modification, the city has no recourse to go after that, uh, property. What you've got, the landlord, could go after the tenant under their contractual relationship under the lease, so they would have an ability to recover. Your only ability to recover would be to spread that cost, uh, over the, the, uh, entire, you know, residents of the city.
Frank? You had your question?
Do we know how many, um, homes or buildings that this actually affects? Are we talking twenty, a hundred, two hundred?
Yeah, um, if you include, um, well, there's probably, I'd have to get you a good number, 'cause the number that I have in my head includes a lot of the multifamilies, I only have one meter, like the bigger buildings, there's, there's still rentals, there's just one meter, some association pays those bills. Um, in this particular case, uh, I'd say no more than probably a hundred and fifty or so.
Hundred and fifty, okay, thank you.
On the residential side, the commercial side, there could be quite a few more, 'cause a lot of those are owned by larger corporations, you know, C.B. Richard Ellis, or, uh, Pro Liges, or somebody like that.
We're saying that this is residential and commercial.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Wesley?
Do we have any apartment buildings that have separate meters?
There's only, I guess technically, two that I can think of, I think there's only five units in each one, though. Um, a lot of the, the bigger ones, um, your Brookwoods, um, Dominion, things like that, those are one meter for, uh, for each one.
But there is no apartment buildings besides that?
That is multiple meters. Yeah, they're, uh, the, all the ones that I can think of, um, have just one master meter for the entire building.
Okay.
'Cause the cost to plum in, you know, the-
Okay.
Sixty, eighty units would, would be prohibitive.
Pete, you were nice.
Uh, what is the policy on the cu- on the shut-off of water? You said seventy-two days, is there any type of dollar amount? I mean, if it, once your water bill's five hundred dollars past due, it's also shut off, or it's just seventy-two days?
Mr. Wilson?
Sure, um, the bills go out, as you know, um, uh, give or take the twenty-seventh of each month, do the twenty-first of the following of each month. Um, on the twenty-third of that month, any, uh, bill that's, has a balance of over a hundred dollars receives what's called twenty-eight day notice, giving them until the twenty-first of the following month to come due on that balance at that time. By that twenty-first, um, again, that on the twenty-third, if they haven't, uh, come due with that balance, then they receive a seven-day notice, which gives them until, uh, seven business days, so typically the fifth or sixth of the next, of the following month to pay their bill, and if they haven't paid that bill, it's solved still based on that first bill, um, then they, then they would get shut off. So they get twenty-one days, twenty-eight days, seven days, and, um, on that seven days, it's something that the weekends don't count, so.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, uh, I'm, I'm going back to, you know, shifting the liability. The, the city attorney says they have no recourse that we have, we, the, the landowner has the same recourse that the city has, you gotta take the guy to court, so, I'm gonna get beat for my rent, I'm gonna have to pay a, a water bill that nobody wants to shut off, 'cause I don't have the ability to call you and tell you to shut it off. Depending on the time of year and the circumstances, we know the city's not gonna shut it off either, we can talk about, we have this conversation with twenty-eight days, twenty-three days, seven days, two days, five days, but given circumstances, and, and I'm sure the city attorney will agree, that the courts are gonna rule that you can't turn that off, and I can't evict the person out of the property without expending a lot of time. They typically give them six months, nine months, even up to a year with, with children in there, a- and I, and I get the argument to make, why should you pay? Because, and the answer to that is, you run the utility. How many ge- millions of gallons of water do we go through in a week or a month? You know, compared to what we're talking about, I don't know how many buildings, or, or what the hit rate is of that, but it's certainly a much smaller number, and, and could be considered, if I was a private utility, the cost of doing business. Just as leakage or a bad pipe, when you see a water main break, and we blow thirty thousand gallons, you know, through a twelve-inch main break on Wooddale Road or Irving Park Road, you know, that's greater than the amount that we lose through these apartments. I, I, I'm, it's just dangerous territory to shift the responsibility of one person inadvertently onto another person, even though through some crafty wording in state statute, you have the ability to do it. And, and like I said before, just because you can do something, doesn't always mean you should do it.
And just to that point, uh, you know, if, if that's the directional, and the, uh, the council decides to go, and we can certainly implement that downstairs, we just need to know what direction that is, that everybody wants to go.
Well, I'm back, maybe, maybe we need to cover, raise the deposit, so I, I'm, I'm okay with that, that, that seems to be a good, and across the board, so it's even.
Yeah.
And that's part of the fund that covers, again, cost of doing business.
And to your question about the, uh, you know, what's seventy-two days' worth of usage, um, just take, uh, the approximate factor of, give or take six thousand gallons per month, um, you come up to, uh, if, if you do the math on the new rates after January first, you're just a hair under a hundred and fifty dollars. Which I know is one of the numbers thrown out, uh, originally.
So you, six thousand gallons a month for essentially two and a half months? Well, really, it's three months when it's all said and done, right, so?
Well, it's seventy-two days.
So that's eighteen thousand gallons, that?
If you do eighteen thousand, then it'd be, uh, about a hundred and seventy-five dollars, a hundred and seventy-eight dollars. So if you do the two and a half months, um, you'd be at the fifteen thousand gallons, and water's gonna be nine ninety-one per thousand, so you're just, uh, a dollar short of, uh, a hundred and fifty.
That's water, sewer, everything?
Just water.
Right, but the, the sewer bill's not being paid too, so we're not talking about, we would-
Sure.
Not charge the sewer bill? And, and if that didn't get paid, then the garbage didn't get paid, so you're charging me the sewer, the water, and the garbage, and that's what I'm saying. That, that can get extended out, and that's probably, in its totality, three hundred a month, especially if I live at the mayor's house, it's probably three fifty. He's got money, though, he can pay the bill.
Yeah, about two-
For three months, so you're, even if it was three months, you're talking about charging me with a thousand dollar bill, or you're gonna leave my property, and that guy's still in the property.
Tony?
Hey, Brad, what, what happened to, uh, credit checks? Don't we run credit checks?
No.
Why not?
We don't take socials, we don't report to credit agencies, um, but, uh, it's just- That's ended the confidentiality of the information, the storage, the, uh, possible theft, data breaches.
But the utility companies, they do that, and if you get a bad apple, you're gonna charge them more in security.
Well, and, I guess theoretically, I'm, I'm not a landlord, but theoretically, the landlords run the credit checks, and they can adjust their-
Can they submit those credit checks to us, no?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Frank?
I wanna clarify that I, I'm not saying that I'm for this, but I do wanna make this statement about if, if you're a landowner and you're renting out, you're taking a risk. Regardless of the fact that, you know, you got a, a five unit, you got a six unit, whatever, this is business, this is a risk of doing business. It's not the water bill, there's so, so many other factors that are involved when you're, when you're renting. To me, this is the, this is the price of doing business, like we mentioned before. If you're a landowner, you should be doing credit checks, you should be making sure that the people that are renting your unit are good people, that's your responsibility. Again, I, I, I don't like it, but I do believe that there is some responsibility that has to go to the owner, where the owner isn't just saying, okay, I'll take anybody, I really don't care, so what, they use the water, it doesn't matter to me. You know, there has to be some responsibility to the owner also, and I don't know if this is quite the answer for it, um, but I do wanna make that point, that I believe that they're responsible for it, because they have to be diligent in making sure that the people they rent to are credible.
Pete?
What did we say, the average, um, the bill, uh, the deposit, what's the average for that? In other towns, 'cause we're at fifty dollars, what is it for other towns around us?
Um, it's a great question, um, you know, anecdotally, the, you know, it's anywhere from fifty to two hundred, I think there's one town that charges their renters two fifty. Um, I know a hundred and one fifty have seemed to be a little more popular lately, um, that being said, we haven't done a full-out survey of all the towns around us. Um, wanted to get some consensus with which direction we wanted to go with this, and then we can, um, but yeah, fifty seems to be, uh, definitely on the, the lower side of things, uh, nowadays.
Paul?
Yeah, uh, how, how long have we been at that fifty? How long has that deposit been at that level?
Since, um, I wanna say it was the mid-nineties, um, it was, there was a deposit around for, for a number of years, then for a few years, the city went, in the, I think it was the early to, early to mid-nineties, the city didn't have a deposit at all, and then in the mid-nineties, mid to late nineties, uh, the re- the deposit got reestablished back at fifty dollars.
I, I would just have to say I'd agree with the mayor and Alderman Woods, that we do need to raise that deposit for sure.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I wanna go to, uh, Alderman Lazar's comment, that the property owner should take responsibility, and that's the cost of doing business. If you can make that statement, that statement should apply at the start of the issue, and the issue is the supplier of water, cost of doing business. Cable company, cost of doing business, gas company, cost of doing business, electric company, cost of doing business, every telephone company, cost of doing business, everybody else, you drive, your trucks, cost of doing business. You can't abdicate that down to the driver, because you just think somebody in, in state legislature put a loophole in state statute that says, we'll just bypass everybody, and I'll offload my responsibilities to my drivers. Then, right, you take them to court.
Mayor?
Unfortunately for us, the cost of doing business, this is a loss to the residents, our job is to protect the residents. But the attorneys leaned over to me and basically said, we can't just raise to the tenants, and I don't know why not, but again, another legal thing. So that, you know, I mean, if we're gonna have to raise, then you're gonna have to raise everybody, and that becomes a whole nother bowl of wags. As far as the residents, I mean, our job is to protect the residents. We can't afford to do, the cost of doing business, take a loss.
We had a motion, and we had a second. The motion was equal to raise the deposit for the water, equal to seventy-two hours' worth of water.
Two days.
At, at the, then rate. Seventy-two days, I'm sorry.
Is that correct, Ali?
I'm crazy up here.
Is that correct? Is that correct?
Do we have a number? His hair's standing up with his.
Exactly, what's left of it. You're killing me up here.
I, I mean, seventy-two days, okay, so you, all we're talking about is raising the deposit to seventy-two days to everybody, but the question is, seventy-two days at my house versus probably seventy-two days at Alderman Roy Wesley's house are two different things. There has to be some kind of dollar amount, I mean, he's probably using fifty dollars of water, I'm using two hundred dollars of water.
Put a dollar in. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, and that, that was, um, it's Alderman Woods and I were, were, uh, debating, um, the, right now, um, as of January first, that the prevailing rate of water would be, um, you know, just a hair, just a dollar or two under a hundred and fifty dollars. And so if you just set it, if you just set it at seventy-two, seventy-two days' worth of water, um, we apply the, kind of the, the average of, uh, the average, uh, house in town, and then it would be indexed, so every time the water rate goes up, if it's based on, uh, seventy-two days, and if it's indexed, every time the water rate goes up, that deposit would go up commiserate to, to that water rate increase.
So I'll amend the motion to make it a flat hundred and fifty dollars, and to-
Okay, I understand it, but, so basically, all the residents, they all have fifty-dollar deposits, so what, are you gonna put another hundred dollars on their water bill next month?
No, it'd be a prospective, prospective, uh, application.
Oh, so anybody who's in now, has grandfathered in at the fifty, is that what you're telling me? Okay, so, is it legal, or are you gonna tell me no?
Hey, I'm gonna move your seat, if you don't. This, this time, I, I will agree with you, and, and you know, probably the best thing that would be, uh, it, you know, if you, that certainly makes sense, it protects the landlord, some of the concerns you were talking about, with the, you know, so the landlord's not out that, uh, but as the mayor said, ultimately, your responsibility is to protect the taxpayers, and the best way to do that, while you have some protection for landlord with the increased deposit, and the city can certainly go after that, and first, and hopefully, you're not gonna get much beyond there, so there shouldn't be much left, but, uh, by having the joint and several liability, i- I, I understand state statute gives you that authority, but the reason that the state statute gives you the authority to lien the property, uh, with a joint and several liability- But the reason that the state statute gives you the authority to lean the property with a joint and several liability with the owner and the tenant is for the reasons the mayor suggests, and that is to protect ultimately the taxpayers from having to supplement the charges for those who don't pay for the water.
But the property owner's a taxpayer too, so where's his protection? We only protect a few people, and the other people don't get the protection? That's what you're telling me?
No, you're protecting everyone. If someone doesn't, if there's a three-thousand-dollar water bill that goes unpaid, and the tenant skips town, you can't recover from the tenant. You can't lean the property of the owner. Then that three thousand gets divided among all of the residents, including the tenant, and they share in that cost. Residents who didn't receive rent from the property, residents who didn't rent to somebody who was not of good character or financial means or whatever.
But it's the same guys you gave water to. So you made the same mistake, but you want me to pay. I'm still confused by the argument.
Well, it's either the landlord pays it, or all the residents pay it, who didn't engage in a contractual relationship with the tenant.
Right, but you're saying that, your comment was that the landlord made a mistake. Well, the city made the same mistake. I mean, if people are not gonna pay, they're not gonna pay. It could be the best guy in the world, he could lose his job, I don't know the reasons. You know, I just don't like putting somebody else's responsibility on another person. I mean, it's just... I have no recourse. I can't shut the water off, I can't do any of that stuff. So it's not like you're giving me all the power to control the water also. You just wanna give me the liability for the water with no ability to shut it off or any say-so in it.
Well, the difference would be that the, as the landlord, once you receive notice, and as Mr. Wilson said, the landlord's receiving notice at the initial delinquency. Once you receive that notice, that's putting landlord on, the landlord's on notice now to go after the tenant for a possible breach. I understand, and I am a landlord, and I've had to, you know, bear the brunt of it, so I understand that. But ultimately, the landlord has a contractual relationship with the tenant that the city simply does not have. So they have recourse.
Well, there's an implied contract, is there not, when he signs up to get the water service?
There is, and part of the breach of that contract, the recourse the city has, is to go after the landlord. But if the landlord can't be, and again, I would recommend we go after whoever's easiest to collect from and the most efficient to collect from. And if it's the landlord, if it's a tenant, that would be the way you'd go. But under the proposal that's being recommended by staff, you'd have the ability to go after the tenant. And if you could not recover from the tenant, you could then recover from the landlord by leaning the property or going direct to recovery. And in either of those instances, the city would ultimately be made whole, and the taxpayers are not going to have to supplement those delinquencies or deficiencies.
Could we call the question? But the landlord becomes a third-party insurance company for the city. Well, we could. We have a motion, call the questions. We debated several hours on this.
Need a roll call?
Wait, what's the motion?
I changed it to a hundred and fifty-dollar deposit.
Need the motion or the second?
Right, well, it'll be commensurate with the then-going rate of water for, is that what you were saying?
For new customers.
We wanna just make it flat for new customers hereon. Just make it one fifty. Okay, we'll make it flat, one fifty from hereon. That's the only change.
Motion or a secondary agree? I agree.
Okay, no questions.
I agree.
Roll call?
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
The report and recommendation for personnel manual updates?
Yeah, I got a question right away. I'd like to make a motion to table this and put it into the budget, to talk about it at budget time. Just changing the policy. The manual, too. Go ahead.
I'll second.
Brad's looking like, am I crazy? Might say yes.
Well, I guess... You know, the whole policy, the whole, the new personnel manual would then be held up until the budget time for three hundred dollars. You're saying we can't implement the totality of the personnel manual unless Mr. Vaughn tells me otherwise. We can't implement any new facet of the personnel manual until after the budget time for the...
Three hundred per person?
No, it's three hundred dollars total. There's only two people that applies to.
Right, for right now, given...
Yeah, yeah. And in two years, it might go to four people. So, but this year's budget impact would be three hundred dollars.
But... May I ask a question? What? If I'm mistaken, it's three hundred dollars, whatever it may be, you're amending the budget now with adopting the policy? Making this change, am I correct? You're amending the budget regardless. Don't care if it's fifty dollars, don't care if it's seventy-five dollars, whatever. You're making a change in manual that's amending the budget regardless of how much it is.
Well, it would be in next year's budget.
But why would we discuss it now and not May one?
Because there were significant changes to legal aspects of the... The manual hadn't been updated since 2006. There's a whole slew of new legal requirements, you know, HIPAA requirements. I mean, there's, I don't know if Mr. Vaughn wants to opine on it, but, you know, suffice it to say, a lot has changed legally in the HR world in eight years. And right now, you know, we're kinda...
So could we, my question, may I follow? So my question is, could we amend, could we do a personnel manual update eliminating past, eliminating the money involved in it? Could we only do, could we only, we go, I'm asking you, Mr. Vaughn, could we pass the manual update eliminating the fee? Money that they wanna add to this manual now? Could we just pass it without eliminating it?
Yeah, you could. You would, that section would remain as it is currently. So there wouldn't be any increases. So you're not eliminating that section, you're just keeping it as it is currently. And just so it's clear, the city manager, under the Illinois Municipal Code, Article Five, I can give Alderman Woods a site after the meeting, Section five dash three dash seven of the municipal code. You know, the power, the manager has the power to make those modifications, and it's being brought to you because it's got a budgetary impact, which is the basis for the council input. But if you are, if those other provisions are acceptable, those can be approved. And then the longevity area, it would stay under its current language as it appears in the personnel manual.
So let's go back here. So I understand that our city manager has permission to adopt anything in this in the government. But we are also responsible for the money situation that is in this manual, regardless of how you look at it. So he has a point for policies and procedures or whatever you wanna call them. We have the obligation as city council members, if there's money involved, it's got to do with the city.
I agree with you, and that's why that's before you, because it did have a budgetary and financial impact.
So then, I, so my motion would be that we pass...
We got a motion to table right now.
The manual.
Is there a second? There was no second?
Yeah.
Oh, there was. Oh, well, you need to vote on the motion. I'm sorry, I didn't know there was a second. Procedurally, Mr. Chair, unless the motion to table is withdrawn, you need to take a vote on the motion to table.
Without question?
Without question, the motion to table is not debatable.
You had a second right away, didn't you?
Would you give a draw?
Okay.
Withdraw.
Oh, withdraw, but you bring it back up again, if I wanna bring it up.
Well, first I gotta agree. Withdraw. I agree.
Okay. Now I have a question. If we pass this tonight, this whole policy goes into effect, and it stays there.
With the exception of the, well, if you pass it without the comments of Alderman Eugene Wesley, yes. If you pass it mindful of those comments, the policy would go into effect, and the change with respect to the dollars would not go into effect. It would remain as it currently is. Until you address it at budget time or whenever you address it.
So my motion is to, my motion is to...
Be careful, we table.
Approve it. Subject to the money situation in this policy.
What's, what money situation?
No, you could pass, you could pass the policy manual. Going to Mr. Vaughn, we could pass the personnel manual update, except, and we can make a motion to accept, accept the stepping pay or whatever. We can make a motion, table on the subject.
Basically, we're looking to pass the service awards and the longevity years of service.
To increase it.
Right, but you wanna pass it now, and then if for some reason at the budget, you feel that...
No, I'm taking it, my motion is to take this out, pass the, pad...
There's nothing to pass except this section, correct?
Go ahead. Call Jeff. He said it was changes.
Let me just try to clarify real quick. The service awards, I believe, are staying the same. The longevity pay at the bottom, if you look at the chart, what you're talking about is amending the personnel manual, which we have to do to come before you, this portion of it, because it has to do with money. Like you said, it's been five hundred and fifty dollars for fifteen to nineteen years, for quite some time. And we're looking to increase that to seven hundred dollars. So if you go down the column, you see that there's a difference of one fifty, one fifty, and one fifty. So if we have the concerns about the one fifty, I don't think we have concerns about the hundred and fifty dollars. I think what your concern is, is you don't like this at all for employees? Is that what you're saying? That you wanna eliminate this section altogether?
That ain't what I'm saying.
Okay, so your concern is a hundred and fifty-dollar change?
My question is, now it's, now it's coming to us now. And you're seeing there and telling me, when we passed the budget last year, we didn't look at this down the line to add a hundred and fifty dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars? And now all of a sudden, now, we like two months, we're gonna start the budget, now we adding money to it? That's my concern here. We playing the shell game again. If you wanna pass it, pass it.
See, I told you. Is any of this money gonna be expended in this budget year?
No.
So it'll have to be built into next year's budget?
Couple of questions, I mean... We have the three unions, I don't know, I don't recall what their, you know, what their longevity pay is and how that works. I mean, there should be some kind of discussion. I just would like to know, it's not here, we don't have information.
The reason we're bringing this to you tonight is we updated the personnel manual, which was extremely outdated. We're being proactive with that. As part of the manual was this section. This is the only section that we need your approval for. So if you want to table this section, you would hold up the personnel manual. If you don't like this for the hundred and fifty dollars, which this table is this way to correspond with the updates with all the unions and their contracts, to mirror their contract. So that's why it's here. It's not really budget-related, it's personnel manual-related, and this has to do with dollars being expended.
How do you not figure that it's budget, not budget-related when we have a set budget for, well, generally already in our budget? So how do you not say that in adding the increase, you're doing, you're making a change?
It's for next year.
So then we shouldn't be talking about this till next budget season?
Okay.
Well, the table.
Table. I need a second.
I'll solve it real quick. We'll table this portion, and then we'll give the employees their new personnel manual. We'll get that done, and then we'll give them a supplement and reprint it after the budget with this new page. We can do that.
That's what I'm saying. How you like that idea?
If that's what we wanna do. 'Cause that sounds exactly like what you wanna do. We can do that.
It's only a page, right?
It's a page. Not very efficient, but we can do it.
Here, we talked about, look at us. No, we got a, no one questioned me.
Second, table.
Tony, you're out.
Yeah, roll call?
Alderman Lazara?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
No.
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Woods?
No.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
No.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Tony, you have a question?
Yeah, I wanna make a motion to pass the report and recommendation for personal manual updates?
Second.
Ira? To pass it?
We're being efficient here.
Sorry, yes.
Where'd you go?
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Abstain.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Items for future, or considered for future meetings, the city codeam updates is ongoing. Advertising on the water bill, January eighth. Video gaming money allocation, January eighth. Is there any other?
I have a legal question, but I don't know which attorney to ask.
Pat's got more books than I do.
If you do advertising on a... Okay, yes, let's say a clock tower, okay? If you do advertise on a clock tower, do you lose your tax exempt for that area? Because you're receiving money for it, and it was built with public funds?
If you are receiving, you rented that space out, and you are receiving rents for that from a, other than a public entity, that would subject that portion of that property to real estate taxes. So what the, generally what the assessor will do is figure if the entire parcel, taxes on the entire parcel are, you know, ten thousand dollars, and that's one-tenth of the parcel, then they'll assess the property at a thousand dollars.
Okay, because when we had our presentation here for our clock tower, the guy says we could sell advertising on.
You could, you make it subject to being a taxable property. It's no different than when you rent, if you were to rent property to a private entity.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? I'd like to, I'd like to see like a water reduction.
So do I.
Water reduction fund, similar to the generator fund, where monies would go to portion of paying for purchasing of water incoming to the home, like a faucet or showerhead. Reduce the flow of water coming in, save money for the residents. If they're showing good faith, they wanna lower that, this, similar to the generator fund.
If they're showing good faith, they want to lower that, this, similar to the generator fund. Mr. Woods?
My questions for Mr. Bond along the lines that he just mentioned, so the property that then we own on commercial that is being used by private parties, I believe we're collecting nominal rent, are we, are you telling me we're paying real estate tax on that now?
That property has not been declared tax exempt because of the use of the property by a private entity. At the time that the lease is concluded, then, uh, we will file for tax exemption on that parcel. The reason for that is, we file for the tax exemption, we get the exemption, and we'd have to declare that we're receiving rental income from that property, and we'd have to pay the, uh, taxes on it.
And, and I assume the rent covers at least the property tax?
That's correct.
Thank you. Just popped in my head.
Brad, do we charge the person at the train station rent?
Uh, very nominally, but yes.
So, my question is, for some reason, if that train station hits the lottery, does the guy that's running it get to keep the one percent?
Well, if he wins the lottery, good for him, but it doesn't, it doesn't have...
The ticket is sold there.
Right, but it would have to, uh, no, it would have to impact the, uh, the current agreement that we have with them. And what the assessor's office and the board of review has indicated is if the, uh, rent is nominal or de minimis to the, uh, total property, the, it's not worth their while to process a, a tax bill on that, and that's what we've determined with the, uh, train station. And it's also, there's metra, metra involved with that.
Peter?
I guess I have a follow-up for Pat Bond. We charge people for water bills, so are you saying we're paying property taxes on every property the city owns? We're, we're supplying the people with water?
Uh, no, because what you're doing is you're providing them services, you're not, it's, you're not, uh, i- if you own the property and it's government property, it by law is tax exempt under the municipal code. Uh, and if you generate revenue on that public property from a private interest, in other words, you lease that property, you rent that property, that portion of the property, it becomes taxable. With the water bills and the other services, you're providing those services, you are not paying, uh, there's no, no tax implications of that, because you're providing those services. Same thing with the police, you're providing police services, you're not taxing the residents for that, uh, for those services. So it's, it has to do with the use of the property, the proper, the, the use to which the property is put. As long as it's a public use for a public purpose, it's tax exempt. If it's not for a public use, uh, or for a public purpose, uh, then it's not tax exempt, and you have to pay the tax consequence on that. And with the, uh, as the incident that Alderman Wood has suggested, we factored that into the rental agreement.
Need a motion for adjournment?
I'll move.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?